Twelve, and I'm calling this meeting to order, Rocco.
Alex, you're present.
I'm present.
Alba Benavides is present.
Agnerita, you're present.
And I think I didn't hear one or two, but that's fine. Okay, so Dr. Science, I do the current form. Next be allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Can we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, everyone.
And next be any public comments, Doc?
We have no public comments, Mr. Salinas.
So then we move on to the next one, Doc. I'll let you take over.
Yes. The first item is the discussion of the 2122 staffing allocation plan. Board members, if you'll remember, at a previous work session, we presented the proposed staffing allocations for our campuses for 2122. What we're going to present this afternoon is the proposed staffing plan for our central office departments. So I'm going to allow Ms. Gloria Rodriguez, our executive director for human resources, and she's going to walk us through the changes for each of the departments. Board of trustees, you received, she's going to project it on the screen, but you did receive that packet this morning. Thank you, Gloria.
You're welcome. Good morning, Mr. President, board members, colleagues, and members of the community. I will be presenting the staffing allocations that we are recommending for the 2122 school year for the departments. Under the superintendent's office, public information, television station, internal affairs, we are not recommending any changes. All of these positions will remain as is, as well as in the police department on page three. We are not recommending any changes in this department either. The next one, which is page four, is where we start with student services. And the positions that are in white are the ones that we've had in place. The ones in yellow will be the ones that I'll be addressing because they're the ones that we are recommending to close by reassignment or attrition. The first item is item six on here, the director for safety. This one was closed by attrition during the year. Line item 11, the counselor for district career, personal, and social development. This one was closed through attrition. Number 20, the next series of items that I will be covering, these are some of our clerical positions. So the secretary for parental involvement, the recommendation is that this position be shared with nurse services by reassignment or attrition. The secretary for guidance and counseling would be shared with our PEP program. We did close one secretary position for executive director for student services during the year when our resignation took place. The secretary for admissions and records is being recommended to be shared with student services by reassignment or attrition. The secretary for the nurse services to be shared with parental involvement. The secretary for student services to be shared with admissions and records. And the PEP clerk, we are recommending that this one be closed by reassignment or attrition.
And can I just add, please, that the reason for these recommendations are, as part of the June 2019 TASB study, it did indicate that we had an overage of clerical positions at the central office administration. And so this is an attempt to be more aligned as far as clerical positions in a central office with districts our size. Thank you, Gloria.
Gloria, on the counselor position that's listed, was that Don Gonzalez?
Yes, it was, Dr. Benavides.
Line 14, Gloria. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So then on page five, we do have a summary of what I just covered. And we've also included what we closed through attrition or reassignment based on the 2021 allocations of what was completed and what is still pending completion. So we will be keeping track of these. As clerical positions become available, then we'll be looking at reassigning from within these positions. Under administration, finance, and human resources, we did remove the executive director for administration. This was a reassignment to operations. The secretary for executive director for administration, this position remained under administration and finance. So we're recommending through attrition or reassignment that we close this position. Line item 11, the director for educational foundation, this one was reassigned during the school year. So we did not open that one again. Line item 12, we are recommending that the computer operator be absorbed through attrition or reassignment. On page six, we are recommending that an accounting specialist close through attrition. The line item 27, an employee benefits accountant to convert this to a paraprofessional position through attrition based on the duties and responsibilities. Line item 30, risk management insurance representative, we closed this one due to a resignation. And the automotive parts inventory clerk, we are recommending that this one be closed as well through attrition or reassignment.
On the administrative and finance, is Homer, the late Homer in the horses position still listed here?
We are currently advertising for that position, Dr. Benavides. We've had little, very few qualified candidates for that position, but we still have it up open.
Okay.
Oh, it is still in, it is still here. The position is still here.
Yes, thank you. Under human resources, the assistant superintendent for human resources, we no longer have this as a standalone position. So we will be removing it from our allocations. And the secretary under assistant superintendent for human resources, we are recommending that that one be reassigned through or closed it through attrition or reassignment. We did have one position that was being recommended at the 202021 school year that we did close already. And we have one clerk that we're still pending to reassign. And those are all the recommended changes for administration, finance, and human resources. Do we have any questions? The next department that I'll be addressing is curriculum and instruction. The director for college readiness, which is line item number five, this one we closed through attrition. Duties, I believe, were reassigned to other professional positions. The secretary still remains. So on that one, we're recommending that it be closed by attrition or reassignment. Under the athletic department, the recommendation is being made for the district wellness strategist that through attrition or reassignment that we can convert this position to a paraprofessional position, and then just stagger the hours accordingly to the needs of opening up the wellness center. Under athletics as well, the television engineer, we're recommending that this be closed by attrition or reassignment. During the school year, we did close an athletic sports and learning planetarium and golf course clerk. And so we did not feel that we needed to fill that one. So that was an additional clerical position that was closed. And we are recommending one athletic purchasing clerk be reduced through attrition or reassignment. Because they would still remain with one secretary and one clerk in that department. We did not make any changes to district testing evaluation, GT, special ed. Here under migrant, line item 64, during the year, Mr. J. L. Pettis recommended that these recruiters be assigned at the campuses. So we went ahead and did that. But we are recommending that these positions close through reassignment or attrition till we get down to three due to the funding that will be available for next year. Line item 82, the instructional coaches, these we're recommending that we close by attrition or reassignment. And we have two individuals right now in these positions or two positions available. Under the clerical positions for the content area coordinators, the recommendation is that the secretary for language arts be shared with social studies. So we would close one position through reassignment or attrition. And for math and science to share one secretary as well. And we would close these through attrition or reassignment. No changes to print shop, library services, nor the technology, I apologize, technology department. We did close the mobile lab tech driver during the year, and we have not opened or needed to fill that one. Under the fine arts department, we did close a coordinator position through attrition. Under the career and technology department, one coordinator was closed, position was closed. We are recommending that the CTE secretaries, they currently have two, that we close one through attrition, and they would still be left with one secretary and one clerk. The museum manager position, we are recommending that this one close through attrition. The duties would be absorbed by the social studies department. And those are all of the proposed changes that we are making for the curriculum and instruction department. Questions?
The only thing I see, Gloria, is with with language arts, I mean, yes. I mean, all the content areas are very important, but we know that the ELA umbrella, and I know you've been there. You can put two content areas with just one of ELA.
Just, well, I know Mr. Munoz did have a plan about having like the secretaries from the other departments also assist in the event that additional assignments are needed or assistance needed. So to where it would be something that all CNI secretaries could pull together. May I continue? Do we have other questions or discussions?
Is this, is this going to be for approval, this plan?
Yes, Dr. Benavides will put it probably in the April.
Okay, but okay.
Yes.
The next department is operations. Under the transportation department, we're looking at combining lines 11 and 12. One of the recommendations was that we increase our certified diesel mechanics. And we want to reduce this total number to eight. The bus driver position, we currently have 223 FTEs available. And we're looking at monitoring the routes and adjust as needed. Under page 13, for physical plant operations, the physical plant inventory manager, we currently have two. So the recommendation is that we close one by attrition or reassignment. The plumbers, we are recommending reduce four by attrition. And these are based on the TASB recommendations from the last TASB study that districts to our size did have significantly fewer plumbers, attritions.
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me, Mr. Salinas is having some technical difficulties. He's trying to log back in. So can we just pause for a minute or so until he's back into the meeting? I apologize, everyone.
Doc?
Yes.
It just turned off. There was like a pop, and then it turned off. It's charging and everything. They're going to change the computer for the next time. But if we stop them, go ahead. Just want to let the board know that the technician was coming in.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gloria, I have a question for you.
Mr. Salinas.
Sorry, Doc?
We can proceed?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Gloria. You can go ahead.
Yes, there was a question coming in.
Yes, Gloria, this is Alex. I have just a question real quick. If on these positions, and if the plan is approved, the people that would be affected would be the last ones that came in?
Well, what we're saying is that through attrition, so as resignations occur or reassignments, then we would close the positions in that manner.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, so going back to the plumber, we're recommending that for be reduced by attrition under electrician, reducing for by attrition, we would still be over the ratio the TASB has us between our comparable districts. Construction carpenter recommending that these be reduced through attrition by two. And for the maintenance carpenter that we reduce by three through attrition. Waste water operator line item 53, the recommendation is that we reduce one by attrition. For painters, we're looking at reducing three by attrition.
The wastewater operator positions, the justification for that is that we are getting more and more of our schools connected to agua side utility. So that's a reason that we can reduce by one in that area.
Our next department CNS, we are not recommending any changes in the CNS department. In the custodial, we are recommending that the clerks, the custodial delivery inventory clerks, these close through attrition or reassignment. And those are all of the proposed changes that we are looking at making under our departments.
Let me go ahead and add here, I think the, one of the questions would be, well, how much is this potential savings? The potential savings, when it comes to the departments, we anticipate approximately $2.7 million. And of course, this is a potential because a lot of these are going to be by either attrition or reassignment. So not, we may not see all of that savings one year. It might be carried over to the following year. So that's something that I wanted to mention on that.
Thank you, Mr. Torino.
Thank you, Ben.
I just had, I had a question on, not a question, but a comment on the secretary for human resources. I understand that we reduced the assistant superintendent, but I know the volume of work that occurs in that department. And I would like to make a pitch for keeping that position because the person doing the job currently is well aware. And I know that Mr. Torino needs help, given that he has those two departments. So I think paying a secretary is comparable, I mean, it's not that bad compared to paying a superintendent, an assistant superintendent. So the fact that he's absorbing those responsibilities, I think that the extra secretary would be helpful in that department.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. Are there any questions or comments from any of our board of trustees?
I don't have any further comments or questions, but the fact that we just got it this morning, I'm glad that it's not for approval today so that we have time to look at it and look at it slowly and see if there's any other recommendations that we can make.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. Okay, this is, this concludes this item, Mr. Salinas.
That's fine. That's why I told you to take it on. I guess the next one will be the athletic field lighting up.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Science, before we start on this, I mean, help me understand why we're, why we have this item in our work session. I mean, in our previous board meeting, we actually, you know, had our legals and our consultants actually, you know, tell us what was going on. And based on what they told us, that's how we approved the $500,000 to take care of all the repairs of the lights. So I just don't see why we're bringing it back, you know, and explaining when we did already all of that.
Yes, and yes.
And actually, at this time, I don't think the district is, it's in a situation where we can actually say, let's upgrade. And another $500,000 from our general fund? I mean, I just, I just don't see it. So can you explain to me a little bit, you know, why we're barely doing it?
Yes. Yes, Miss Arnaud. The next item for discussion is that of athletic field sports sliding retrofit. And you're right that we did bring this item at the previous board meeting on March the 8th, and the board did act on it. However, administration feels that additional information to the board is important because administration is finding that the extent of the damage to the sports field slides is more than the approved amount is. And we wanted this opportunity to bring more information to you. So to do that, we do have Mr. Rigvia Real, assistant superintendent for operations, Mr. Alex Bahadur, executive director for facilities and maintenance, and Mr. Lloyd Loyah, energy and utilities director. And they did want to, I guess, provide more detailed information and additional information on the actual extent of the damages. And so I will let, I don't, Mr. Vialli, if you want to start, or Mr. Loyah, if you want to start providing this information to our board.
Sure. Dr. Science, I would just like to add something to the group in reference to this. The information that we're asking, let us not forget, and if I'm wrong, Dr. Science, didn't our boys or girls advance in soccer?
Yes, yes.
And are we playing those games at home? Because everything that we do at decision here should be based on our kids. And if our field is not in conditions for our kids to be playing, and if the light is not appropriate, like I said last time, this is for our kids. This is nothing, nothing else but for our kids. Our kids are going to have to play away. Am I correct, Dr. Science?
Yes.
If we have to actually play home?
Yes, that's correct.
For the record, thank you.
Well, and I totally agree with you, Mr. President. I mean, we are here for our kids, okay? But if we were told that with $500,000, we were going to take care of all the fields, why are we bringing it up for a million?
Well, at the end of the day, ma'am, that's what they're going to explain. That's why they're coming back so that the ones that didn't understand are able to understand this time. Well, at the end of the day, I concern you, you have your reasons for your questioning, and that's why this is here. And they're going to explain. I just want the public to know that I am 100% for our kids. The best fields from La Jolla, the best fine arts are in La Jolla. We always lead, not the other way around.
If I can add, Mr. Salinas, I totally agree with you. And I don't think any one of the seven here, or eight, including Dr. Science, disagree with you on that. Our priority are the children. And playing on our home field is an advantage to our kids as well. That is not in question at all. We would never say no to having our facilities appropriate for our own children.
Whoever voted, you already said no to our kids in the last meeting.
No, 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 no. Well, maybe we won't present it with the correct information.
And that's why they're here. That's the exact point I'm trying to make. And they're going to clarify for us right now.
Which we were expecting in the previous meeting. And that's okay. We're here to do that. To begin with, I don't have a packet in front of me that tells me the information. I asked you, Mr. Vialli, yesterday, if we had a packet ready, I wanted to see it since yesterday because I like to prepare for these meetings.
And if that's the case, Dr. Science, and these, these members need to have that information with them. But maybe they have something that, maybe they're going to have something they're going to provide because I myself don't have a packet. But I just want to make a point that this was brought to us last time, and I was in agreement of canceling it out. But we'll let you, sir, whoever's going to explain it, show the number.
Sure enough, hold on. Let me just make my point. You made yours. Let me make mine. My point is that in the last meeting, never did we vote against not fixing what needed to be fixed. We voted against not fixing things that did not need to be fixed.
And I understand that, but they're going to bring the information that.
I'm not, I'm not, hold on, please.
Okay.
With your notice, we just went over the staffing allocation plan that might reduce jobs here in our, in our IZ. And then that might be needed, or I understand that part. But in reducing jobs, how do we justify to the community that I'm going to reduce jobs here? We might even, because it was brought up at committees, and for the record, I'm against closing schools. But we might even do that. That's being presented to us. Yet we can't even, we, you, we want, we're being asked to fix lights that are not, that are not broken?
Well, because that's what they're going to explain right now. The ones that are not broken are already starting to break. And there's conditioning that are going to need fixing. That's what they're going to explain to you right now.
Okay, okay.
And they're going to break it down, and they're going to break it down into detail.
But I just wanted to be known that we never, never would vote against improving our facilities for our children. They are our priority. And I hope that all seven of us agree on that.
No, I do agree with you on that.
Thank you, board of trustees. And I will, I will give the floor to Mr. Lloyd Loyah, utility, energy and utilities director. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
Dr. Science, if you don't mind, Justin and Mr. Razor, we can just help kind of scope the discussion of what's an open session and what should be in closed session. So nothing, we don't waive privilege or inadvertently share anything that we don't need to share in public that should be.
Okay, so, so should we go to closed session?
Justin, Jeff.
To the extent that we will be discussing parts of the insurance claim that may be subject to litigation in the future, I think that it would be in the district's best interest to have that discussion in a closed session to the extent that it has to do with things that may be disputed with any insurance claims in the future.
Okay, so with that, Ben, with that being given, do I take it in with the section codes?
So if there's a, if there's a part of the presentation that's just to discuss what is broken, that would be okay in open session, Justin and Jeff?
I will, I believe that the discussion of facts will be okay in open session. Discussion of anything about legal strategy or any other elements of that would be best left to closed session.
Okay. Mr. Lawyer and Mr. Vialli, are you clear on, are you clear on kind of that, on those parameters, just so we don't inadvertently say anything?
All right. Awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Ben, but you will cue me when you want me to take it in, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. Now, Mr. Board President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Isella Science. With us today is Mr. Victor Larsa as well, and Mr. Point White from MRI Engineering. He works hand in hand with our insurance consultants assessing all the damages district-wide that we experienced due to Hurricane Hannah. So the topic here is our sports fields. And we wanted to be in this workshop to clarify any miscommunication that occurred on the March 2021 meeting. So let me, I have a timeline here, and it was available at the last board meeting. I just wasn't given the opportunity to speak at that meeting. So that's why we wanted to be in this work session. The question that was asked at the last board meeting was warranty. Why aren't our these lights covered under the warranty? And find, and inside the contract with, with the current contractor, which is Qualite, any acts, any acts of God or a natural disaster void in warranty. So that's off the, that's that, that's off the book there. So that's why the lights are not covered, and they have to come out of pocket, and we had to do is insurance claim. So I'm going to give you a timeline of what has transpired and how we got into this point. On July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, we were in the middle of a pandemic, and when it rains and pours, but Hurricane Hannah made landfall on that day. For the next two weeks, our apartment, I mean CNS, custodial, physical plant facilities, went around our campuses, which was our main priority, because we're getting ready to open up schools and obvious damages. The, the sports lighting and our miscellaneous buildings were towards the end of our list, our checklist. So about two weeks later, after assessing the campuses, we did a walk-through at our sports complex, which is our two baseball fields, our two softball fields, and our football and soccer field. During that walk-through, Coach Garza was with me, Mr. Alex Wahar was there with me as well. We, we found that we had an extensive damage to our sports lighting. That same day, we contacted the contractor, which is called to what had happened. Unfortunately, since we were in the middle of a pandemic, we still are in the pandemic, but we were at the peak at that time. The company wasn't allowing their techs to travel. So luckily, they have the capability of, of checking our, their lighting system remotely. And I know that they had the capability, because I've been out there in the field, talking, looking at certain sections, and they're able to troubleshoot. So they did troubleshoot and do the assessment remotely. And that was conducted on August twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty. And they submitted that quote in August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty. Unfortunately, I was thinking we were gonna spend maybe a few thousand dollars to replace motherboards, circuit boards, contacters, which we had done in the past with warrants to work. They would, they would fly in, take care of the problem, make us whole again, and take off. And we have another issue, they would come back in and take care of that. When I get the quote, it's over four hundred thousand dollars, it was at four, four hundred, five thousand. So when I saw that quote, I mean, I felt like I was being taken advantage of, and our district was. So I wrote him an email demanding for them to physically fly down and inspect our equipment before I present this information or this quote to administration and to my board. We, I know we just finished installing these lights three years ago. It wasn't gonna look right. They took about a month to, they finally came down in September twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty. They troubleshooted our entire, just the football stadium. I think that was a misconception at the last meeting that we thought, just talking about one field. We're talking about our, our sports complex, which is our four ballparks and our football stadium. They came down, did the troubleshooting, he flew back up on October thirteenth, twenty-twenty, they submitted their second quote. And that quote came in at eighty thousand dollars more. So we're looking at half a million dollars for lights that were just not working at that time. But they couldn't guarantee that a week in advance, a week later, a month later, two months later, that the other lights were gonna start failing, which is happening right now. So that quote, that's what we're saying, it's not an accurate quote. That's what, that was done back in October, that was done back in September. So I submitted that quote to the facilities committee back in October thirteenth of twenty-twenty. The committee requested another quote for these lights. Now, it's not like, like if I can just go to Home Depot and put these lights on, these lights are custom-made, they're manufactured, they're for the specific, for these fields. It's like if you have a Toyota and a Mercedes, you try to put a total of part in the Mercedes, it's not gonna work, it's not gonna be comparable. So our only other option was I got together with Coach Garza and Mr. Wahar, and we contacted a company by the name of Musco, which we have at Palmview High School and at Watertown Lincoln High School. We've had it for over a decade, Coach, and we've never had a single issue with those lights. So we've worked with this company in the past, we know their product, they're a hundred percent American-made, and they monitor their equipment twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, and they let us know when there's an issue, not the other way around, the way we're having to do with this company. So we made contact with Musco, they flew down the very next day, did the troubleshoot, they troubleshooted all five fields, they did a walk-through. And this, that was November sixteenth, well, that was November fifth, twenty-twenty. November sixteen, twenty-twenty, they submitted their quote. Unfortunately, it was right before, before the Thanksgiving break, so when we came back and, and, and January, after talking to, to, to purchasing, because anytime I have a situation like this, I go to Ms. Apata, the expert in her field, I mean, we can't deny that, anytime I have an issue, I go to Ms. Apata. And due to the amount of the project, we had to go out for quotes. So we, we, we developed a quotation form, sending out to various vendors to come out here, and we gave them ample time, almost three weeks, almost a month to come out here and, and, and do their walkthrough and submit a quote. We gave them till February tenth of twenty-twenty-one to submit by ten AM. Musco was the company who submitted, and the agenda that was presented to the board on March eighth. It's a million dollars, it's a lot more, because of right now, with Qualite, we're at five hundred thousand with that first quote back in October, back in last year. And since then, since Hurricane Hannah hit, well, since their assessments, since their quote, we've had twenty-five more bars go out, Coach, am I right? So that, that price already jumped up to over six hundred thousand, just, I mean, and I can't tell you, that's a fact, but I know it's what it is. Last night.
Or just, or just the clarification, that's a piece of new information that we received about the, the age of the quote.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Loya, please continue.
Thank you, sir. So last night, we were conducting a walkthrough, and luckily, Coach Garza was at a, was at a baseball game, and two board members were there, so we invited them over, and they witnessed what I'm talking about. When we were out there, I turned on the lights for them, and out of a sudden, there are twenty bars go out. And they started flashing, coming on and off, and Coach Garza can, can, can have my back on that, and so can the board members. I mean, so we're having these issues, all we're gonna be doing with this original company, which is Qualite, is just putting a bandage over. And in the next year or two, we're gonna pay over a million anyways. So what I'm trying to say that this is not a want, this is a need. And like Coach, and like our president just said, I mean, it's embarrassing that we have a soccer team who advanced to playoffs, and, and we can't host the game here. Our softball team is having to give away home games. I mean, I, I play sports, and I, and I know that the importance of home field advantage, and we're taking that, but we're having to pay for referees, for porta potties in Edinburgh and other stuff, and Coach can piggyback off that if you would like. So that's what we're asking, that with this, with this contractor, we're just gonna be putting a bandage over, and we're still gonna eventually pay what we would pay to get a turnkey product, a product that we trust, the company that Coach has worked with for over a decade now, with no issues. And I mean, we just.
Loya.
Go ahead.
What's the, the warranty on this with the, with the lights that you're proposing?
It's a ten-year warranty, Mr. Garza, it's parts and labor. And, and my issue with, with the current contractor was, hey, man, I mean, these lights didn't fall. I mean, the lights didn't fall, the lights were underwater. I mean, get, help us out, throw the bone, I mean, we just, we just gave you some, some business nine, even three years ago. And they took to their guns, and, and that's fine. But so this company, it's, it's a ten-year parts and labor with Musco. And I know I also had a question that why is it called a retrofit? It's called a retrofit because we're using our existing poles that are, that are in place right now. I'm talking about the poles that were in place, I think they were installed back in nineteen ninety-eight, Coach. And those have a fifty at the stadium, and those have a fifty-two life year expectancy. So all we're doing is retrofitting the poles, that's why it's called a retrofit. I mean, and this administration, I think we're on the same page, Mr. Wahar, Coach Garza, Mr. Vialli, and as long as we're with the Zapata, we're on the same page that this is the best solution for our district and for our community and for our kids. I mean, they deserve lights that we can showcase our state-of-the-art facilities. And like I said, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but I'd rather have a product that it's brand-new product, and then we're buying another warranty, we're buying a ten-year warranty, because, I mean, yeah, yeah, right now, with Qualite, we're already down to six years for the, for the lights that are supposedly working. And like I said, these lights are falling every day, I have a different situation. And I get calls at two, three in the morning from PD and from the community, why are the lights on? And all I can tell them is, I don't know, they shouldn't be on, I don't have them scheduled on. So my system, my phone is telling me, because I can control lights through my tablet or my phone, it's telling me that everything's off, and people are taking the time, so I have to get up and drive over here and shut them off automatically, because we're not communicating. So I mean, those issues that we're having, and I apologize for not having the opportunity to, to, to speak to the board at the last meeting. I'm always ready to go, and I did submit some information. But I mean, at the end of the day, I'm here to answer any questions. Mr. Garza, we're on the same page, you can answer your questions as well.
Mr. Loya, I'm wondering, Mr. Coy White, who's the engineer in this project, has any other information to add?
Mr. Let me turn on the camera.
I have a question before we move on, it's just a quick question.
Go ahead.
I know that Moscow is giving us a ten-year warranty, and it seems like just yesterday, we heard this same speech about how our kids would have the best quality lights, and with the district moving to investing millions and millions of dollars into state-of-the-art lights, apparently, we're gonna have the best light from San Antonio South. And my concern is if Moscow was given as a ten-year warranty, and Mr. Garza had been working with Moscow for the last ten years, why wasn't this company taking into consideration to do the lights since the beginning? Now, with a project as big as the millions and dollars that got invested into the lights the first time around, which I haven't seen in any stadium around the valley, why didn't we look into having a ten-year warranty back then, and we're worried about now? I know that the hurricane hit around July twenty-fifth or twenty-seventh, around there. And honestly, it's, the lights were already not working before, they were turning on in a certain amount at three in the morning and stuff like that. Why didn't we go into it and look at it more closely before we had to wait for a, for a hurricane to come about now?
And I can answer.
It's, it's just, I mean, if somebody can answer that for me?
Yes, I can, sir. So during the warranty process, was that Mr. Cantu talking?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cantu, I understand, and that question was asked to me last night during the walk-through, why didn't we go after his company? If we knew, if we knew we had issues since, since then. The reason is, is because they were making.
Could I stop you, Mr. Loya? Now we're kind of getting into some legal issues, and the engineer on the team is part, the engineer with you is part of our team. So we do have language on the current agenda that it does allow us to go into closed session, so can we go into?
You want to do now, Ben?
Yes, sir, please.
All right, at this time, guys, it is twelve forty-two, and under section code five-five-one-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-zero-seven-two, and five-five-one-zero-seven-four. We're going into executive session. It is one thirty-seven, and we are out of executive session. And the next item will be adjournment, can I get a motion for that? A motion, and in a second, I'll take that other slow move as a second, all is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, meaning is adjourned.